Okay, I will go ahead and call to order this public meeting of the Missoula Board of County Commissioners. It is Thursday, June 6, 2019, and we will begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Josh, would you like to lead a public announcement?
Yes.
So we wanted to publicly recognize Andrew Hegemeyer and Christine D'Senzo for your guys' fantastic work on the mapping project. So I'm going to read some of the text on this, and then we're going to present you with something and take your pictures. I'm glad you weren't forewarned. It's kind of special that way. So here's the text, and then I think all of us want to say something in our own words, too. This is "Your Great" to Andrew and Christine for spearheading a multi-year public process and incorporating feedback to create a land use designation map for the Missoula urban area. Thanks to your diligent work and creative problem solving, you found consensus among diverse interests, including neighborhood residents, realtors, conservationists, developers, and preservationists. This map will guide a long overdue zoning update for the county. Your work will serve as a roadmap for how we will develop over the next 20 years. You are a valued employee of Missoula County. Yay. Yeah, good. That was the photo op right there.
Yeah, I would absolutely like to second that. Projects like this have every possibility and likelihood of going off the rails at some point. And the work you guys did, working with the community, all of the interests that Josh mentioned, really, I think, sets a high bar for public process, public participation, and collaboration. And I think this is a great topic for a conference to highlight how planning can work well and where we can bring diverse interests together and create something good for the community that the majority of the community gets behind.
I agree, and I think we all thanked you before and said, you know, the reasons we felt this was special, but really, it's a great example of the collaboration and showing like how government is supposed to work and how government is supposed to work with the people and for the people to come up with how we govern the people. And so I think it was an exemplary example of that type of work and the type of work that we'd like to see. And also, just the ability you guys had to come up with compromises that weren't just like, they're here, they're here, let's go in the middle, and everybody will be a little unhappy, but we're compromising, right? So it's a good thing. It was really taking thoughtful consideration and to make compromises that made sense and were based on information and data to compromise to where actually everybody in the end said, oh, even though that wasn't this or this, like this is good, too, and this works. So you did amazing work, and we are very lucky to have you. So, thanks.
Yeah.
Oh, come on up for your plaques.
Somebody have a camera?
Are there any other public announcements? Any public comment on items not on today's agenda? All right, seeing none, our current claims list consists of claims received from May 17th to May 29th in our office, and they total $3,165,652.78. You can always go online to our agenda portal, click on that, and see what all the claims are that add up to that total amount. We have four hearings today. We will open the hearing, the first hearing, the resolution relating to the alternative project delivery contract for the elections building with a staff report.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. How are we doing, Amy? Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Chris Lonsbury. I'm your chief operating officer for the county. As you know, we're in contract negotiations with Western Montana Mental Health to purchase a building along Russell Street to permanently house the elections staff, as well as our elections that occur sometimes up to four times a year, which I think sometimes folks forget. As part of that process, we recognize that there is the potential that we may have to do some slight modifications to the building and also the potential that we may have to construct a facility to address late registration for voters who choose to register on the same day as the election. As part of that process, the county's been very successful in the past in using an alternative procurement method called a general construction manager or construction manager at risk process. And the first step of that is what we're at today, which is a request to the Board of County Commissioners to look at allowing the county to use that alternative procurement method. And so in the Montana Code, in Title 18, Chapter 2, Part 5, which is the Procurement Act in the state of Montana, it talks about the steps we need to take if we're going to look at using an alternative procurement method. And in this case, we are talking about the general construction manager or construction manager at risk process. And that is used when we have a project that meets certain specific criteria where the complexity, cost, and phasing of the project might go outside the normal process that we would use where we would design a building and then go straight to construction. The benefit of the construction manager at risk piece for the county is that by having a construction manager basically as the owner's representative present during each one of those stages of design and development of the building, as well as during the construction phase, there's the potential to have great cost savings as the modifications to the building might have to happen. Also, to look at new industry best practice and standards, as well as helping to reduce some of the risk to the county when we have a project that has a shortened timeline. In this case, the shortened timeline is driven by one large factor, which I think we're all aware of, the fact that in November of 2020, we will have a large election that will occur. It's both a presidential year. We'll have a congressional seat up, as well as state and local races, all occurring at the same time. And so we anticipate that the voter turnout in 2020 will be exceptional. So as I was mentioning, the contractor or general contractor, construction manager piece goes with us. They work as the consultant during the design process. They can offer new innovations, best practices. And as the process goes on, they work as the owner's representative, helping to make sure that the design is actually what's implemented in the field. And also, as that process is occurring, to look for areas where there can be changes to help save on cost and time as well. That process is called value engineering, so as they go through each piece, they help to shape the budget. They give us preliminary budget numbers before we go out to bid on certain pieces of that, so we have an idea of what the total cost will be even before we get out to that. It's important for folks to recognize that even when we use the construction manager at risk process, there is still a public bid process that occurs. So all of the jobs that might be related to this construction project still go out for every contractor or subcontractor to be able to bid on. It doesn't circumvent the public process or the ability for those companies to actually be part of that. When we talk about the election building project, we're talking about the renovations of the current building and then potentially up to 4,200 square feet of additional space that would be used for that late voter registration, same-day voter registration, as well as that space being used by the sheriff's department for training, potentially by the Office of Emergency Management as an alternate emergency operations center. As you'll recall, during the flooding from the previous season, we had a bit of a space and parking constraint that occurs in the downtown Missoula area, which I think many are familiar with. There's obviously a greater amount of parking along the Russell Street areas. There's both street parking, a small city parking lot that we're allowed to use, as well as the anticipation of being able to get about 100 additional parking spaces in with the purchase of this building over on Russell Street. So the considerations we're asking you to think about today is whether you believe there is a public benefit. I'm here to argue that there is a public benefit to using the construction manager at risk process here. We feel that it will reduce confusion around the election's location by having it on Russell and having both same-day registration and the actual normal elections process all occurring in one location, potentially for that 2020 election. We have constraints at the fairground, which is where we've historically housed that. As you know, the fairgrounds is under renovation. And that means both the commercial and culinary building this year are under renovation, and the mid-century buildings, which are heavily used by elections, potentially would be in the middle of construction during the November 2020 election, as currently planned. Of course, Russell Street is a high-traffic area, so we have some complexity there. Also, we have a very short timeframe. If we think about the time between now and November 2020, it seems a long way away. It's more than a year, but in reality, where we have not yet signed a buy-sell agreement or are in the process of that, we would still have to get an architect onboard, as well as engineers and construction companies. We really have a very compressed timeline when we look at construction being complete by November of 2020. And then, of course, there is a cost aspect to this. The construction manager at risk process tends to be very cost-effective. We've certainly seen that in projects. We've used this at the fairgrounds, the courthouse renovation, Fort Missoula Regional Park, to help trim costs where we've needed to, recognizing the scarcity of resources when we talk about property tax dollars. So this is a really long recommendation, and I apologize. It's just one more time looking at the code. The actual recommendation that we're asking for today is on the next slide, and it's not quite as long as this. But in order to use the alternative procurement method, we do need to have made sure that we met those things that we just saw on the previous slide, that there is a public benefit, there is a high level of complexity of the project, and there's the potential for cost savings. And that's what's required here in each one of the sections under 182502 that you look at when you're considering that construction manager at risk process. And so our request today is that you recognize that complexity and that you qualify the elections building renovation project, recognizing that it meets the requirements of 182502 due to the complexity of the project, the potential schedule ramifications, and the public benefits that could result from using a construction manager at risk, and that it will result in an improved voting facility through the benefits of value engineering and that, recognizing again, those technical complexities. And if you do that, then we'll present the resolution to you for signature next week at one of your regular admin meetings. And with that, that's the end of the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks.
Chris, what's the process of getting a contractor or a construction manager on the job to do this?
Sure. So if you approve this process, the first step will be to release an RFQ, which is a request for qualifications to determine that if we can find a pool of eligible applicants who meet the qualifications to be able to conduct or to serve as the construction manager at risk, and that usually has a bonding capacity requirement to it, because we'll want them to be able to bond for a certain ability to that availability in their schedule as well to be able to perform the work and the cost estimating that we're looking for. From that qualified pool, then there's an RFP where we ask them then to price those, and then we have criteria to evaluate them on, including price at that point. We select that construction manager, and then at that point, we would have a construction manager onboard and would move forward with the rest of the project.
What's the timeline on something, on those two processes?
On those two-
If all goes well.
If all goes well, we would put out the RFQ piece of it in the next week for that. It would be out for a minimum of, the minimum requirement in state law is two weeks. We tend to like to have those out for three or four, just for folks to actually be able to turn around and produce something in that amount of time. So we'd be looking at about a month from now, a little over a month from now, before we got through the RFQ responses back to us. It'd probably take about two weeks for staff to be able to go through those. They might want to meet with those participants. There's often an interview as part of that process. And so about another month elapses before we'd be able to issue the RFP, and then another month to a month and a half before we'd actually have the person onboard. So it's potentially up to three to four months away.
Yeah. And November 2020 is looking pretty ambitious.
November 2020 looks very ambitious, but we're going to try really hard.
Is this the kind of thing where it's mostly our major construction companies that would do this, or are there individuals?
It is usually a construction company, for the most part, although not necessarily a major company would be what we'd be looking for here. It depends on the scope of the project, because it's really usually limited by their bonding capacity. So when we talk about Fort Missoula, which was a $42 million project, in total $38 million on the park, and then other money for other pieces of it, but $38 million of that being the park, there was a threshold over which a lot of the smaller companies can't, couldn't necessarily get over that hurdle. But we do get responses from some of the smaller or medium-sized, I guess, the Ciruses, the Quality Constructions, who can do this process when the scope isn't quite as large.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? No? Great. Thanks. This methodology has worked really well on us for past projects, and it complies with the, you know, requirements to do it, so.
So you mentioned this will come back at admin. Are we taking action today, or?
I think, yes. You would make the motion and adopt today, and then just the signature of the resolution would come to you.
Okay.
Because if there was public comment, we need to be able to incorporate that into the final.
Right.
Hint, hint, cola. Is there any public comment? All right, seeing none, I'll close that hearing.
Okay. Maybe the one in the, this isn't really a motion.
Apologize, I think that slide got-
Either way, flip a coin? Okay, I'll go for it. I'll move that we adopt a resolution relating to the use of an alternative project delivery contract for Missoula County Elections Building renovation.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Chris. All right, next up, I will open the hearing for the resolution to adopt the Missoula area land use element. Well, actually, we did that, so it's not really a hearing. Yeah. With staff.
I'm Andrew Hegemeyer. I'm a planner with CAPS.
And I'm Christine D'Senzo, also a planner with CAPS.
Yeah, and so what before you today is that it's the final resolution to adopt the land use map, which will make it effective immediately, essentially, today. And basically, the purpose of this is you held a public hearing, actually, kind of three public hearings. Heard a lot of public comment, and you voted to approve the land use map, but you had some changes that you wanted to see incorporated. So this gave us the opportunity to go back, incorporate those changes, make sure the document is all, you know, final copy edits and things like that. Then we come back today, and then you say, yeah, you did that, and it's ready. It's now effective. So what we did was we made some changes to the land use map based off of what you guys directed us to do. There was a change down on the intersection of Blue Mountain Road and Highway 93, where we added a little bit of commercial. Then we made a big change in the Grass Valley area to kind of represent that compromise that we talked about. And we made a change from mixed use to industrial on High Broadway and right about roller coaster. And then we made a change to the map in East Missoula from residential to live-make. And then we also made some changes to the text as directed by the commission that really, it affected a number of different land use designations, but the purpose was to focus a little bit more on the design in those areas where we had important resources we wanted to protect. And it talked about conservation design and clustering and housing and things like that. And then we just did a copy edit and caught a scattering of typos and things like that. And that was it. Any questions?
All right, thanks. Is there any public comment on the resolution to adopt the Missoula area land use element? Please state your name for the record and limit comments to three minutes.
Hi, I'm Lee Bridges from East Missoula. I just want to take a minute to thank you guys for all the hard work you've done. I know. I've been there with you guys for the couple of years it's taken, and you guys have done a remarkable job. Just want to thank you guys and let you know we really, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, we will close that hearing.
All right, I would-
Ready for a motion?
I would move that the board adopt the resolution to adopt the Missoula area land use element as an amendment to the Missoula County growth policy.
I'll second that, and by way of speaking to the motion, I would say that this is not the end of the game here. This has been a lot of work to get to this point, but implementing this plan and what you see in this map is a next logical and important step, and that does mean zoning, so more attractions to come.
Yeah, I was going to say, onto zoning and onto the same level of public process and engagement and working with all players to come up with things that we can all be proud of.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, and I will open the hearing for MVP Holdings LLC rezoning request with a staff report.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. No one's interested in staying. Yeah, all right. Lauren Miller, planner with Community and Planning Services. This request today is to rezone the property located at 8275 Highway 10 West. The applicant for this request today is Linda Miller, and she does not have a representative. The subject property is located off of Highway 10 West near the I-90 Highway and 93 South interchange there. The surrounding existing uses to the property are a mix of commercial and industrial uses and vacant properties that have not yet been developed. The proximity to the interstate and higher-classified roadway grids, along with no residential uses within the immediate vicinity of this parcel and the surrounding uses of the property, does make this an ideal location for commercial and industrial uses. The property is located within the Spencer subdivision, a two-lot minor subdivision that was planted in 1995. The lot is 9.8 acres and has a 10-foot no-access strip along the northern property boundary, along Highway 10 West, and a 30-foot wide portion of a 60-foot wide roadway and utility easement along Alita Drive on the east end of the property. Currently, the lot is utilized by two businesses, Paradise Dental Technologies, which is this building right along Highway 10 West there, which does light manufacturing of dental tools, along with Harlow's Truck Center, the second building, which is a commercial truck repair business. The applicant's desire to rezone this property from commercial to industrial is to allow for an expansion of the Paradise Dental Technologies business. This rezoning request, however, is not contingent on the expansion of the business, but instead to get that, the existing uses into compliance with the zoning. There's two access points to the property, one directly off of Highway 10 West and then another one located off of Alita Drive. As you can see from this photo, there are some established trees and landscaping along the north end of the property, helping to buffer those existing buildings on the property. The property itself is relatively flat with little to no topographical constraints. The south portion of the property is vacant and is currently just utilized by the trucking company for storage purposes. The property is currently served by private wells and a septic system. Sewer is available on this lower corner here, right up on Alita Drive. And with the expansion of PDT dental or any of the current uses that are on their property, they would be required to connect to sewer. Here's some photos of the property. This first one on the top of the screen here is a look of the PDT Technologies building from Highway 10 West. This larger photo just kind of showing you that existing landscaping that exists on the property. And this photo with the school bus on it shows the Harlow's Truck Center building. So the current zoning of the property is CC2 general commercial, and like I said, is surrounded by both commercial and light industrial zoning districts. The CC2 commercial being this orange color and the light industrial being that purple color down on the bottom there. The general commercial zoning designation allows for a number of permitted uses that are of commercial uses that require large areas of land. The property is located within the 2005 Wyman West Plan and is designated as light industrial, shown here on the right-hand part of the screen. The request today is compatible with the Wyman West Plan and the 2016 County Growth Policy. And excitingly, what you guys just adopted, it does meet what was now the adopted land use element, which designates it as industrial center. So the proposed zoning is CI1 light manufacturing. This zoning district's intent is to accommodate light manufacturing, processing, fabrication, repairing and assembly of products and materials, warehousing and storage, transportation facilities, and commercial uses with large land requirements. The uses and the densities that are permitted within the CI1 zoning district will lay the framework for any future development and opportunities identified in the comprehensive plan. The zoning is designated or is designed to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare of the neighborhood based on the ability to provide the site and development standards based on this proposed zoning today. The proposed zoning will not affect any nearby properties or their occupants other than what is already existing on the property today. And then proposed zoning does match the character of the district and the surrounding areas. With this request, staff reviewed the application based on the criteria found in MCA 762203, which you can see on your screen here, and Section 8.20 of the Missoula County zoning regulations, and found that the request does meet this criteria and was addressed in the staff report in the conclusions of law section. The request was sent out for public comment, and owners within 300 feet of the property were notified of the zoning. We did not receive any comments from the mailing nor posting onsite. The agency comments that were returned are listed on the screen here. There were no real comments of concern from any of the agencies. Additionally, the request did go to Planning Board, which they voted 9 to 0 in support of the proposal and did not recommend any additional conditions for the request. So with the findings of facts presented in the staff report and the conclusion of law, staff is recommending that the board approve the request by MVP Holdings LLC to adopt the resolution of intent to rezone the CC2 general commercial parcel to CI1 light industry be approved based on the findings of fact contained in the staff report, public testimony, and written comment. The property to this approval is legally described as Lot 2A of Spencer subdivision, less than accepting portion A of long addition. And that concludes my staff report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Yeah, so either for you, Lauren, or maybe for Tim, describe how, well, in the context of we just adopted the updated land use map and we're going to, over the next year or so, look at how zoning may need to be changed, both textually and possibly map amendments, and that this area might be one of those subject to map amendments, and that we might contemplate broader-scale changes to zoning in this area, changing it to industrial or whatever zoning districts we come up with. I feel a little bad in that we've got this smaller portion being rezoned right now, and I'm sure these folks had invested money and effort and time into this rezoning proposal. And then 18 months from now, maybe we do a broader-scale rezoning, and everyone else is kind of a free rider in that we're going to initiate that. Just thoughts?
Yeah, definitely, yes. They, the need for them, you know, they're really wanting to expand. You know, they're kind of growing out of their existing buildings, so they're really kind of in urgency to expand their current building right now. They did, Linda did. We recommended, you know, asking their neighbors, you know, who kind of already have industrial-type uses around there, you know, if they'd be interested in the rezoning as well. And she didn't hear back from any of the neighbors, unfortunately. So I think with the, you know, with the need for them really to expand as soon as they could, they really just, you know, kind of jumped at the bit here. So we did, you know, we did, of course, point that out to them, that that maybe was coming, but I don't think it was soon enough for when they wanted to get started, so.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah, definitely a comment of concern, but yeah, unfortunately, wasn't fast enough for them, I don't think.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there any public comment on this?
My name is Kevin Lamy, and I'm actually the Controller for Paradise Dental Technologies. Our owner is at a meeting with our largest customer, and if she misses it, we might as well kiss our jobs goodbye. So anyhow, that's why she's not here. Just a comment, we are outgrowing our facility. If we get this zoning change, it would allow us to build a new building on our current spot. We actually have 12 employees that work at a building three miles away, so there's a efficiency issue, especially when we're in a tight situation trying to get product out the door. We have to run it over there and bring it back and do some other processes. The new facility would also allow us to bring in some new processes that we're sending out to the Midwest for some finishing on some items. So it would allow us to bring in some new equipment, possibly add some new jobs. So just thank you for your consideration. Linda's an extremely good employer and treats all of her employees very well, so I just want you to take that into consideration, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? All right, we will close the hearing.
Okay, ready for a motion? I will move that the Board of County Commissioners approve the request by M V P Holdings LLC to adopt the resolution of intent to rezone the C-C2 general commercial parcel to CI1 light industry be approved based on the findings of fact contained in the staff report, public testimony, and written comment. The property to this approval is legally described as Lot 2A of Spencer subdivision, less and exception portion A of long addition. That reads a little awkward, but that's okay.
There were a few typos.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
And last up, I will open the hearing for the subdivision regulation amendments to road standards and the fire hazard assessment with a staff report.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We're here to update the Missoula County subdivision regulations. I am Tim Worley, Senior Planner with CAPS. We're going to focus in on the road standards and the fire hazard assessment, which is Appendix C in the subdivision regulations. Well, why these two areas to be adopted today for change? We felt these were a priority based on public health and safety needs and also requests for amendment from the private sector, and we think there's significant potential for positive impact overall. This is part of a larger maintenance project to include legislative changes where most of the eight chapters of the subdivision regulations will be amended. Today, we're just talking about a little portion of Chapter 3 and Appendix C. So let's jump right on into the road standards. This is a table that was in force from about 2013 to 2016, before we adopted our latest regulations. And we asked ourselves, how can we improve this table? There's a lot of data here, a lot of information. We've basically kept the concept of bigger roads for bigger subdivisions, but we thought, you know, we really need to get into an urban and rural distinction between roads. And we do have that in our current regulations. We wanted a table that captured a diversity of information, but not too much information like the one that was in force from 2013 to 2016. So we created our urban and rural distinction by adopting this appendix, which wraps around both the Lolo and Missoula urban areas, where roads are intended to look more urban. So the road standard table looks like this. What you see in yellow are the standards that we felt we needed to work on as far as getting roads narrower. We wanted to make sure that the roads in the urban area could be maintained by county equipment, but what we ended up doing is we probably created roads that were too wide in the end, and we heard that from the private sector. And we felt that roads could be reduced in width and still remain parkable and drivable. So what we ended up doing is we met with public and private sector engineers. We evaluated which roads work and which roads don't work, including parking scenarios. And so we were able, in most cases, to find substantial width reductions and create a no-parking 24-foot-wide collector road. So narrower roads end up meaning less asphalt for the developer, decreased overall costs for subdivision projects, and they meet with our sustainability goals by reduced energy expenditures and reduced CO2 emissions. Smaller roads, narrower roads, reduce speeds and end up better defining both driving and parking areas. So this is what we're recommending, a slim down in roads in most categories. And it was pointed out, we're actually going a little larger on a couple local private road categories. We're widening those by a couple feet, but the rest of the road categories where you see underline and strike through, we're recommending reductions. We did detect an error in one category of street where we ended up going a little too wide. This should be 28, oops, 28 feet wide for this parking on one side in a large lot subdivision, if the subdivision is between six lots and 39 lots. So that's one correction I would note for today. I don't think we detected any other errors along the way. Public Works was the only comment that we received, and they said, they recommended that units be defined within our definitions chapter. And our preference would be to consider the plain meaning of the word "unit." We have a definition for dwelling unit currently. And I searched high and low for a good definition that would cover both industrial, commercial, and residential units, and I could not find one in other sets of regulations or in Black's Law dictionary. So our recommendation is to not actually define this word "unit," to just go with the plain sense of what that means as we're counting total numbers, whether you're talking about a commercial subdivision or a residential subdivision or an industrial subdivision. One category of road that we added back into the regulations is an off-site road, which is actually in our definitions section. It's a road right-of-way not entirely contained within the boundaries of a subdivision. And here are a couple examples. South Avenue serves as the off-site road for numerous subdivisions, both north and south of that county road. And George Elmer Drive, on the photo on the right, serves as the off-site road to a couple, actually probably more than a couple, city subdivisions and maybe more than that into the future. And going way far south, on the southern edge of the county, I believe this is Lund Road, which provides access to multiple subdivisions right up against Ravalli County. You can see that they're very different roadways. Our goals are to promote emergency vehicle access standards, just fundamental access for these roads, to reintroduce the concept of a uniquely attributable off-site road, and to address roads that front a subdivision. Those got thorny because sometimes those would get caught up in the discussion of, well, they're one foot shallower than they need to be. Do we need to ask for a variance for that road? And that would include roads like, even like South Ave or Spurgeon Road. So the concept of a uniquely attributable off-site road, these are roads that have to be built simply to access the subdivision. And what we're saying is they must meet the road standards in the revised road table. So it's a pretty simple equation. If you have to build a road to access your subdivision, it has to meet the standards in this table. Now, for roads not uniquely attributable to the subdivision, they must meet basic standards for width, grade, clearance. They have to be accessible year-round. And for larger subdivisions like 50 and 100 lot subdivisions, that off-site road may have to exceed basic emergency standards based on a traffic study. We have also introduced the concept of cost sharing. We make reference to rural special improvement districts, payback provisions, and cost-share agreements. These are issues that actually come up fairly rarely, maybe once every other year within subdivisions, but we thought it was important to at least acknowledge them. We don't necessarily provide the mechanism for making them work within the regulations, but we do think they're important to reference. So Planning Board, in their comments on the 23rd of May, they did have some questions over the order of the off-site road standards. We go basically from very general standards to more specific standards in the off-site road section. I like to think of it as a funnel, where at the top of the funnel, it's wide, and it narrows down to the more particular standards, depending on whether you have a uniquely attributable off-site road or not. Planning Board also wondered what the city's opinion was, since obviously they're going to be annexing some of these roads on the urban fringe. And I consulted Tom Zavitz from the city. He's working on the annexation policy. And what he said is that, yes, county roads should match city roads, but he realizes they're not always going to do that. Our approach in the past is to make sure that we provide adequate right-of-way so that upon annexation, if the city wants to reconstruct to their standards, that they can do that. This is part of sort of an ongoing conversation we've had for a number of years. And our requirements, like geometrically, like what our curb looks like, what the city's curb looks like, how thick asphalt has to be, those standards are different enough that we don't think we can necessarily mesh exactly with the city right now. So our goal is still to provide sufficient right-of-way so that if road reconstruction has to happen upon annexation, that the city has enough to work with. And I do have one example. This is Third Street West, west of Hawthorne School, headed out by Stony Brook subdivision. And in the foreground, what you'll see is that's actually county land. And where you see the curb, that's annexed, an annexed portion of South Third Street West. This is an example where the city essentially had enough right-of-way to work with that they were able to install curb gutter sidewalk to their standards. So that would continue to be our philosophy on how to approach sort of the difference between county and city roads. We are going to have some more conversations with the city, especially in that Bill Grant area between West Broadway and Mullen Road, about trying to find a happy medium of making our roads mesh. We'll probably have to make them mesh in that area. But in the meantime, this, within subdivision, we would continue to have a philosophy of just making sure that adequate right-of-way is secured during subdivision. So on to the fire hazard assessment. This is Appendix C in our regulations. It comes out of the International Wildland Urban Interface Code. It scores hazard level from moderate to high to extreme. We've been using it since November of 2016. Different elements are scored for risk, and the higher the overall score, the higher the hazard. If you have a moderate to high score, that means you're within what's called a wildfire hazard area. We've seen some positive impacts from this. It's impacted building materials, particularly roofing materials. It's helped with ongoing fire fuels management issues on properties. It's an opportunity to address issues of access, fuel types, defensible space, and building materials, amongst other things. We do have some recommended changes for it, of course. Starting at the very top, we feel that this section should distinguish between subdivisions, where every lot has two ways out, and other scenarios that aren't as advantageous. So that's one recommended change that we would have. We have some clarifications as well. One ongoing question is, what are light, medium, and heavy fuels? That has been sort of a head-scratcher over time. And shouldn't fuel type influence the score more? If you look at those scales, it goes from 1 to 5 to 10 on the light, medium, and heavy. But if you look at defensible space, it goes from 1 to 10 to 20. We think that those should be more similar. And on the defensible space end, we've seen fairly inconsistent scoring over a couple of years that we think that we can standardize a little bit more. So our recommendation is for professional oversight of this section of the appendix, that is fuel types, defensible space, and topography, that a professional overseen by the county should score this section of Appendix C. And we do have some photos that we would recommend adding to this section as well, this appendix, that show very clear examples of low hazards, medium hazard areas, and then high hazard areas. And these were recommended by the Office of Emergency Management. So one recommendation from OEM was to actually change fuel types to fuel hazard and then change defensible space to treated space. And there was some conversation at Planning Board about that, about whether that's appropriate or not. And we actually feel that we could go either way with that recommendation. Planning Board made a good case that if you refer to that as treated space, it may imply that treatment has to happen on every property every time, and maybe that isn't the case. And as long as we have a professional overseeing that section, that maybe defensible space is the appropriate term. In fact, one Planning Board member called it the term of art that's probably more appropriate. I don't think we would disagree with that. Planning Board also asked the question, do you have adequate staffing to conduct these reviews? And it will, I think, increase the county's obligation as far as how we actually go to a site and score it for its fire safety. So in Planning Board's motion to approve, they included references to retaining defensible space versus treated space. And they encouraged county staff to connect with city staff on road widths, as I had mentioned before. The subdivision regulations, just in general, obviously are required by state law, and they address basic issues of public health and safety and transportation. We reviewed these changes against our growth policy, and we found them to be consistent with the county's sustainability and climate change goals, particularly the narrowing of the roads. And we found them to be a balance between serving the public interest and minimizing regulation. So staff's recommendation was for, is for approval, as was Planning Board's. Planning Board made a unanimous recommendation for approval. So you'll see the resolution. I think it's one of the first pieces of paper in your stock of stuff, Commissioners. And this is what you would sign if you choose to adopt these changes. And there's the recommended motion, that the proposed amendments to the Missoula County subdivision regulations, road standards, and Appendix C be adopted. And this concludes my presentation.
Tim, who signs Appendix C? Who scores Appendix C now?
Developers score Appendix C, top to bottom.
They score their own development.
That's right. And they would be able to score the majority of it from this point forward, should you adopt these changes. They just wouldn't score, and I think I have a visual of it here. They just wouldn't score this section here. So fuel hazard, low, moderate, and high, that would be an OEM official currently or Missoula Rural Fire, depending on where you are in the county. Same with defensible or treated space. That would be scored by a professional.
If it was a Missoula County OEM person, would we have to hire a new person to do that?
We're in conversations with OEM about actually possibly transferring the responsibilities of the fire inspector outside of that office. That's...
Could we just contract to have this done?
Yeah, we used to, actually, before it was an OEM, it was a contracted position. And the magic person that we're looking for has the skills of both of, an engineer who can review things like fire hydrants and fire sprinklers and water tanks, and who can review things like defensible space. So if you have any ideas about who that magic person is. This is going to be a process. It's not something that has to happen tomorrow, but we would like to transition that, because Adrian and Ken are very busy over at OEM, so.
And I personally like the idea of this not falling on the shoulders of the rural fire person. Just out of concern that they may be put in an awkward position to score some of their friends or neighbors.
Yeah, just to follow on that, I'm all about having this reviewed by a professional. I do wonder, though, Tim, just based on what's, I guess, what you see currently in the queue for subdivisions, this doesn't seem like a particularly onerous or hugely time-consuming process of filling out Appendix C. Clearly, it takes a site visit and some effort on the part of a professional to score it, but in terms of whether or not we need a whole bunch more bandwidth, staff-wise, to do this, I mean, how much, how many subdivision proposals are coming down the pike that you see this just being a big time drain for?
I don't see it as excessive. I think we're going to have to jump in and get a sense over the next few months of what we're looking at. I think for some subdivisions that aren't clearly in wildfire hazard areas, there might even be, you might even be able to do sort of a remote scoring if you're in the middle of a field next to, let's just say, Frenchtown High School. You could do some work with aerial photography and that sort of thing. Obviously, I think there's, most assessments, you'll have to get out on the ground and do work, but I'm not seeing this as over the top immediately, and it'll be spread between Missoula Rural Fire within their jurisdiction and OEM outside of Rural Fire.
Yeah, it's a good point. We don't see a lot of subdivision requests, because I do, of course, hesitate to adopt something and say, well, we'll take on this workload when we don't have the capacity to take on this workload, and maybe it's not best to have Rural Fire doing it, you know, maybe, and that we may be in the middle of a transition of how we kind of address this anyways at the county. But since we do have the staff who are very qualified to do it and are willing to maybe do it a few times as subdivisions come along until we really figure out what this will look like permanently, I think I could get behind it. I do think it's a better idea to have a professional doing it than developers. Any other questions for Tim before we take public comment? Okay. Is there any public comment on our subdivision regulation amendments?
I think this is on, yeah. Hi, I'm Ryan Salisbury. I'm here on behalf of the Missoula Building Industry Association today, and just want to thank Tim and County Public Works for the collaborative effort to come to some middle ground on these road widths. It was a great conversation and some back and forth, and we had some good examples, like he said, of roads that did work and didn't work, so I wanted to come here and speak in support of the road widths and the amendments to the subdivision regulations. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Dwight Easton with Missoula Organization of Realtors. This was one of the items that was quickly put on my plate when I was, took this job back in August, and so I was not as well up to speed, but I do know that this was something they wanted to make sure move forward. We do appreciate the work that Tim has done. Specifically, we like the idea of the urban and rural distinction. I think it's very important in our county. There's obviously a lot more development in this urban zone, but we need to make sure that we're taking care of those folks that are up in Sealy and Condon, those areas. We appreciate that very much.
Thanks. I would ask if there's any more public comment, but there's no more people, so I assume that's all. All right. Seeing no more public comment, I will close the hearing and entertain a motion or further discussion.
Well, I'll just say, I think these are great changes. There was some discussion of whether or not to expedite some of these maintenance amendments, if you will, or changes to the subdivision regulations above a more comprehensive array of changes, and I think it was the right thing to do, particularly on the fire hazard assessment, as we continue to be made keenly aware of the importance of addressing development in the wildland urban interface. I think these are great changes, and I love the photographs that distinguish between a low-hazard alfalfa pasture and something that is a much higher-hazard fuel type. I think that's a great move. I would tend to agree with Planning Board's recommendation. I, too, am not necessarily dogmatic either way, but I can envision a situation where you have a home situated atop a rock outcropping, and it's defensible space, but it's not necessarily treated, really. So I think defensible space makes sense to retain as a term of art. I think the proposed changes relative to egress and ingress in the fire hazard assessment makes sense, and also, thanks for all the work relative to road widths. I think that is something that has been long a point of concern and sometimes contention as we look at subdivision proposals and road widths and how to address costs for subdivisions and also address better climate change-related impacts and sustainability impacts of our development. So thanks for all of that.
So, Tim, in the near future, are you guys going to come back to us with what the decision is on who's going to score Appendix C, whether they're a contractor or additional responsibilities on the backs of a current employee?
Yeah, we'll definitely keep you all in the loop as to who the fire inspector is. I mean, I think over the next two, three months, it will remain in the Office of Emergency Management. And then, within Missoula Rural Fire District, which population-wise is larger, that's going to remain Missoula Rural's responsibility. So along the fringe of Missoula and even going down into Lolo, that will all remain Missoula Rural's responsibility for scoring of Appendix C. So that's the way, that's the two geographic areas that we've always had two different reviewers, or I shouldn't say always, but since about 2010, it's been that way. The fire inspector will have conversations with Missoula Rural, but Missoula Rural usually does their own review, as does, on the flip side, if you're talking like Clinton or the Swan, everything's the fire inspector. It might be...
In Clinton or the Swan, you mean it's the rural fireperson in that area?
Rural Fire is, in fact, I could probably just bring up a...
Rural Fire is just kind of outside of city limits and in the valley?
Right, and then most of Lolo and then going up Highway 12, that's all Missoula Rural. So Missoula Rural is this teal color right here. So population-wise, it ends up being the majority of the subdivisions, essentially. All the other colors is fire inspector responsibility. It's a big geographic area, but it ends up being fewer subdivisions typically. We do have a couple subdivisions moving through that are in this. This is Frenchtown Rural Fire, and that's fire inspector territory up there. Thanks.
So, Tim, wouldn't another option be, once we get our sea legs under us, so to speak, and figure out what the level of effort is in filling out the fire hazard assessment? If it's going to be a real time drain and we're not going to contemplate doing it internally forever, couldn't we have a list of certified inspectors that the developer would need to choose from and essentially hire to do this?
That's certainly a possibility, yes.
I mean, just in terms of trying to limit our opportunity of being overtaxed ourselves, pardon the pun, but by way of exceeding our staff resources, yet at the same time retaining some control in terms of who the developers are choosing to fill this out, so it's, it's not just, well, I think...
Yeah, that certainly may be the way to go. I think the more difficult certification is in the wildland and urban interface nuances. A PE can do this on the fire sprinkler review and fire hydrant review, and there's quite a few PEs that do that currently. It's just when you're getting into the art of dealing with defensible space and that sort of thing, there are certifications that are a little, I don't want to say obscure, but we're still exploring what those certifications may end up being for individuals that want to learn that skill.
Yeah, and I guess I'm thinking of certified foresters, or there are folks out there who are trained in this, who might not, who might be outside the sphere of local government, so.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments before we hear a motion? Anybody want to?
Happy to do it. So I would move that the proposed amendments to the Missoula County subdivision regulations, road standards, and Appendix C be adopted.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. All right, is there any other business to come before the commission? With that, we will adjourn. Thank you.